It's November nine, twenty twenty one, and I call this study session. If this is what the patient ordered, it is now.
Four thirty.
Dr. Mitchell. Room office.
Andres Gonzalez.
President.
David Malkin.
Present.
Eric Benegas.
Present.
Donna Freeman here.
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 All board members are present.
Dr. Mitchell, are there any corrections or items?
No, there are none.
In motion, end of the second agenda. Of fourth study session of Tuesday, November nine, twenty twenty one.
I'll move.
And every second. Room office. Room. Tom Freeman.
Aye.
And Ms. Gonzalez.
Aye.
David Malkin.
Aye.
Eric Benegas.
Aye.
Eric Chen.
Aye.
Motion, carry. Black salute. All in tennis will be led in a pledge of allegiance to the. By President Eric Chen. These rights. On Thursday of this week, Wednesday, we honor the. Soldiers, sailors, airmen, and the guardian. And for all those men and women who greatly defend our country, we thank you and that makes you. Please write hand over your part. Ready, begin.
Our flag is raised. And to the republic of America. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. And which one any comment?
None that I received. I want to check from this board. Are there any comments?
There are none.
Thank you. So that's the way we received an update on student report success and achievement. Dr. Mitchell.
Perfect, thank you. So our educational services team has worked collaboratively to prepare for the board to provide an update on, as Mr. Chen has said, the supports that we've got in place for our students, our students' successes, achievements, and one of our areas to grow. And so we are, as we welcome our students back for the twenty one, twenty two school year. We're sharing some information that we have prior to the pandemic. The information through the pandemic, as well as the information we have at the very beginning of this year. And then sharing information as it is going to build out over the next three years. So this time, if my pleasure would be turn it over to Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. So today's presentation will provide a report on our data during student dismissal. Post student dismissal, we will share actions addressing students' social emotional needs, actions addressing learning loss, and actions that are addressing and promoting student success. These actions are in our local control accountability plan, in our expanded learning opportunities plan, in our elementary and secondary student community plan. We know that the eighteen months of student dismissal impacted our students many ways. And we know that it will take three times better amount of time to address any of our students to get back to where we were pre-pandemic. And because learning doesn't happen in a vacuum, and student achievement doesn't happen in a vacuum. Many of our efforts are support our students with social emotional needs, as well as making sure that we have background services that address the whole child. So tonight, we'll give you a snapshot of where we are at this point. We look forward to providing the board continuous updates, not only in the mid-year report, but also as we go through the local control and accountability plan update in spring. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Moore.
Good afternoon. So, as Dr. Moore mentioned, we're going to start by giving an update on progress and student progress that was made in Roland prior to the pandemic. Just to set the context. And then to data during the pandemic and also just more recently, as we come back to in-person party. So first looking at, see, pre-pandemic, what is the story of our data prior to March thirteenth, twenty twenty? The California dashboard, as you know, is a tool that the state district used to monitor progress on student achievement. The English Language Arts Indicator uses scores on the Smarter Balance assessments to determine a performance color. So red is the lowest and then blue is the highest. Colors are determined by performance on the Smarter Balance, but also growth, so year-over-year growth. The tile on the left, the twenty seventeen E L A, you can see that Roland was performing at the orange level. That year, also, you can see in the numbers at the bottom of that tile, there were six student subgroups that scored in the red and orange levels. Then moving into twenty eighteen, the next tile to the right, you can see Roland grew to a yellow performance indicator, meaning that they demonstrated year-over-year growth on the Smarter Balance in E L A. And then finally, the last tile in twenty nineteen, moving to the green, was just one away from the highest level. You also notice in that last tile, there were only three student subgroups that performed in the red and the orange. So there was a improvement in not only overall, but also in the performance of our student subgroups. For math, it's a very similar story. In twenty seventeen, the district started in orange, and there were five subgroups of students that were performing at the red and the orange level in twenty seventeen. And twenty eighteen, overall, maintained that orange level. And then finally, in twenty nineteen, the year before the pandemic, Roland moved into a yellow performance level, and there were the same as the E L A. Just three subgroups that performed in the red and the orange. So the data here shows that what we were doing prior to the pandemic really was working. It validates the hard work that the teachers and the site leaders did to transform instruction, especially among our targeted subgroups. We're confident that staying in force on this approach to learning through all the plans that you have approved, allocating resources towards professional development, coaching, resources, extended learning opportunities, interventions, all taken together, will continue to result in student achievement. We also recognize that the pandemic disrupted this progress and student achievement. In many ways, we have new challenges, and we also have new opportunities. So in the next slides, we're going to look at data from E L A and math during distance learning, as well as a set of data from returning to in-person instruction here. Just as students were just returning to come back this fall. And then we'll go into what are we doing? So that's the data. So then what are we doing? To support students. So before we look at those outcomes, I just want to set, this is a reminder kind of the history of the data and really nationwide, California specifically. The availability and the type of data certainly evolved over the course of the last two years. We know that formative assessment is the most powerful kind of assessment, provides that day-to-day moment-to-moment data that teachers use. Teachers have done an incredible job of pivoting during the last two years of coming up, using strategies to check for understanding, check, you know, collect data to inform the instruction. Remote instruction, however, is very difficult to do that kind of formative assessment, where you're checking on the students, removing that face-to-face time. Is really removes that ability for teachers to observe and in-person way to guide instruction. Summit of assessment, on the other hand, provide that high-level snapshot of student performance, see larger trends and needs. So the slide here shows the history of summit of assessments in the last three years in Roland. So starting on the left, in twenty nineteen, which was the last year across the state, everybody gave the Smarter Balance assessment. We're used to giving that kind of pass. You can see the participation rate for grades three through six, seven, eight, and eleven is anywhere between ninety-five and ninety-eight percent. So, and that's typical for a. Very strong participation rate. In twenty twenty, because it was falling on the heels of the full dismissal, some of the state testing was suspended. Statewide data or district data for twenty twenty, and then jumping ahead to twenty twenty one. After a full year of remote instruction, each district in California chose their assessment to administer. For grades three through eight in Roland, we administered the Star reading and Star Math assessments. And we met with teacher groups to go through a process of making a decision on which assessment are we going to use for. And there were a variety of reasons why teachers felt like this was the most appropriate assessment. One is listed on the C D's website of valid assessments. We've administered Star reading, Star Math, in Roland for many years. Star reading, Star Math is an adaptive test, so it takes about three to forty-five minutes to administer compared to seven, eight hours of Smarter Balance. So in the context of remote learning, it made more sense, we felt like we could get a higher participation rate, giving Star reading, Star Math to those younger students. Because, as it was a shorter adapted test. And then finally, the STAR, unlike a lot of the other assessments, has done a linking analysis and has a report built into the system that correlates how a student would have performed on the Smarter Balance. So it's a predictive test as well. So for those reasons, we gave the Star reading, Star Math in grades three through six and seven through eight. For grade eleven, we continued to give the Smarter Balance primarily because if a student takes a Smarter Balance test in grade eleven, they have the opportunity to participate in the early assessment program. And if they score four, then they, they don't, they go straight into general college credit courses and systems. So we didn't want to remove that from students. It was a longer task, it was harder to give remotely. But we wanted to give students that opportunity and not so much a chance to give directly the college course where they're fresh in here. You will notice in twenty twenty one that the participation rate is lower than twenty twenty. I will say that if these rates, you know, these rates do reflect what we hear and see across the county during remote instruction. It was a crucially an effort to get students to take an assessment here. Or even the teachers did outstanding job, provided a lot of training and support on how to administer that. So we, they did a really good job of getting to the participation rate. When we looked at the makeup of that testing population, for the most part, most of the tests, like the subgroups, we've decided to made it by the subgroups. Most of those subgroups reflected what we would expect to see. We added a ninety-five percent participation, in exception of two groups. So English learners and students with disabilities were about four to five points lower in terms of their participation than what we would expect to see. And so we keep that in mind as we look at the results of the data as we go forward. Meaning, the results may have been a little bit lower if all of us had. So on the next slide, we're going to look at these scores from nineteen compared to twenty twenty one, because if you recall, there's no twenty twenty scores. So first, looking at English Language Arts. So here are the end-of-year results for twenty nineteen in blue compared to the end-of-year results for twenty twenty one. Now, remember, there was no summit of assessment data in twenty twenty, so there would have been a bar in the middle of that. Testing this, so this is a two-year for grades three through eight, forty-nine percent of students that are exceeded standard of the twenty nineteen Smarter Balance in E L A. And you fast forward two years in orange, thirty-eight percent of pre- through eight students meeting exceeding standard as measured on the Star test. So it is an apples-to-orange assessment, but as I mentioned before, Renaissance has done an analysis that validates the prediction of the Star reading test performance on the Smarter Balance. So it gives us a general sense of how students would have performed, and you can see in grade three through six and seven through eight, there wasn't a doubt over that time with the orange of the twenty twenty one, to me, the end of that would have been. Grade eleven, if you recall, we gave the same assessment, the Smarter Balance. There was only a slight decline of one point, I noticed that, which is partly explained by the lower percentage of English learners and special education students that participated in the assessment. Also, as we reflect on these results, taking a test remotely requires a lot of self-regulation and experience. So our older students in high school probably fare better in terms of having those skills because they were older, able to maintain that that sustained ability. So in math, it's a similar story. And grades three through six, a decline. Again, this is apples to oranges, but we're running the report based on the predictive analysis. So generally, there was a decline in grades three through six and seven, eight, and grade eleven, there was actually an increase. Again, I want to emphasize that participation rate for the twenty twenty one was lower than twenty. And we know that English learners in special education did not participate at full rate. So as we're looking ahead into this year, looking at twenty twenty-two for Smarter Balance, I want to make sure we have that understanding that that once we get back to a hundred percent participation, we have the full English, we have all the special education, so we'll likely see some of those factors truly reflect where our students are. As we're looking at this data, you generally see downward trends during the pandemic. We know that this decline reflects the trends that we read about across the nation and across the state. After a full year of remote learning, there was an impact on student achievement. As we'll see a little bit later, we also know that the social emotional toll of the pandemic has to be considered when we're looking at achievement rates, the two go hand in hand. This, for parents, will go into how we've been dressing this year. The next couple of slides, I want to share some data about currently some recent data that we collected. So moving now into the present, this data shows how students perform on the most recent Star reading assessment. So the dark orange bar is outcomes from May twenty twenty one, so this is the end of the year, which is what we just looked at. And then the light orange bar shows the outcomes, the same test, so this is apples to apples. Well, that's the outcomes for August through September of twenty twenty one, after being back in person for just a few weeks. And so you can see for E L A, and it was broken out by the 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 subgroups, there wasn't not much of a difference between the end of the school year and then the beginning of being back in person. Looking historically, this is about three to four points lower than what we see this time of year for students, so we know that they're asking to do looking at our all results. And then in math, there's definitely a clear downward trend from the spring to fall. So again, remote instruction in dark, dark orange to light orange being the first thing you do in person. Again, I'd like to emphasize that the light orange bar was like two to three weeks back. And at that point, Delta Grand was very high, there was a lot of quarantine going on, so I don't believe this truly reflects an in-person, you know, reflection of instruction. And we will be watching carefully as we administer this in January to see what kind of outcomes and growth we have after a full five months of being in person. So historically, also, looking at this data compared to prior years, this time of year, it is about ten points lower than this time of year, but again, it makes sense of the instruction. And knowing that even now, there's still less than ideal circumstances. So in reviewing this data with teachers and site administrators, we know the pandemic had an outsized impact on the way students learn mathematical concepts is using manipulatives and talking about strategies, solving problems together. This type of instruction was very difficult, if not impossible, to implement during remote learning. And we know that from the data on the tutoring company, we'll insert a little bit later, is that math this year, the paper company, that math has been the highest requested area as students called in for tutoring help. So as we saw earlier, when I emphasized, we're confident that the type of instruction implemented prior was working to increase student achievement. We see from this data the clear needs to need students where they are right now and accelerate that learning this year. So before we move into some slides about, Dr. Bier, this is going to take us through specific actions that Roland is doing to meet the needs of these students in our current reality. I wanted to provide a quick update on how the state is shifting the way that they measure growth. And we'll start to see this shift in terms of the C D E and as we start to message. So if you recall from the earlier slides, the California dashboard model showed year-over-year growth. The problem with this model that you complained about for years since it was launched is that it looks at different groups of students each year. So it takes our third graders and third graders. Over the summer, the C D E approved the long-awaited new growth policy, populates growth down at the individual student level. It's a much more accurate way to tell the story of how a school is impacting growth for students, about where they start, depending whether they're high or whether they're low. This new model requires three years of data to calculate the school and district level scores. So the C D is considering this year, the year we're in, twenty one, twenty two, as the new baseline year one here in this new model. So year one will be twenty twenty-two, that will take at the end of this year. Year two data will be twenty twenty-three, and then the third year that will use to measure the growth will be twenty twenty-four. These three years will then be used to calculate the first new E L A and not academic data for the California dashboard in fall twenty twenty-four. This is just an introduction. We will be providing much more in-depth explanation, data, and analysis on the new growth model, as well as some updates on some new tools that were implemented in Roland that follow this individuals to student growth models, so that we are also prepared as we go into this to, for a model that we are providing teachers, sites with the data that is most meaningful, shows individual student growth. So that's what I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Bier, and she's going to walk through the actions and supports.
What we know, what Dr. Bier has shared with regard to the data and the outcomes pre-pandemic, is that we were on a path to sharing the achievement gap. And so we saw growth over time. That tells us that we identified some effective practices that were supporting our student learning and their growth. But we also need to be responsive to current needs, since we know that the pandemic has had an impact on our students and our staff, and obviously the learning setting. And the data also showed us those trends. So being responsive to this, we're not only continuing the effective practices in what we identified before the pandemic, but we are expanding and augmenting on those. So what you see here on this slide, if you will, are two buckets. And that's in supporting our staff and then supporting our students. We know, and research has shown very clearly that the single most important driver to impact learning in the classroom for students is the teacher and the staff that directly support the students. So many of our actions here are intended to ensure that we have the most prepared and supported staff to address the learning behavior and social emotional needs of our students. So we have invested in ensuring that our staff has access to twenty-first century learning classrooms with the technology and training to support students, not just in the pandemic, but post-pandemic. Teachers have been supported with training and access to data that's their own students' data, and this information allows them to make instructional decisions in the moment for their students, those students that are sitting in their classrooms day-to-day. And in addition, we have continued to support teachers with professional development to learn and support effective instructional pedagogy. Because of COVID, there has been a focus on providing social emotional learning training for all our staff, not just certificate it, but classified as well, so that they can support our students as we transition back to in-person instruction. And more of this will be shared later with regard to this action, and this will focus a little bit more. But we do continue to also support our teachers through standards aligned core and supplemental instructional materials. We continue to move forward with standards-aligned curriculum adoptions, but we also provide supplemental materials like G S M O's to access labs or science and R A S kids to support kids with reading, and all of this supports the instruction classroom. At the target instruction, our teachers continue to focus on their instructional practices, but they're being more intentional in what and how they teach. So for example, teachers are prioritizing learning standards to accelerate learning and providing targeted small-scale instruction to support students who are not meeting critical expectations. And when we look at the bucket of supporting our students, we continue to build on offering extended learning opportunities like credit recovery, home health, and tutoring, as well as the new winter reading session that's coming up. And tutoring, that's available for all students in various formats, as we recognize that these students may be different. So for example, teachers tutor in-person at both elementary and secondary classes. There's also virtual tutoring for students in grade seven through twelve with college tutors. And we have additional services like paper and the options enrichment program that offer additionally to for students. And as Brian or Dr. Kapp mentioned earlier, as of November third, we have registered one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven sessions on paper. And the main topics that students pay to seek supportive was in fact areas in. And the main topics that students paid to seek supportive was in fact areas in. We're currently serving anyone from two hundred and fifty to three hundred students at this time through the options program as well. With the extended learning opportunities brand and the elementary and secondary school emergency points that we received. Were able to expand and add to existing services for students to provide additional supports. So as you know, E L O and S R funds support following areas that are used here. Like accelerating progress, which includes our after-school tutoring and interventions. And integrated student supports, which include counseling and mental health. It's important to note that this funding will be spent over the next three years. Because we know, as Dr. Hough mentioned earlier, coming back from, as Dr. Somoral mentioned, is coming back to the pandemic levels in many areas is going to be a lengthy process. Excellent, please. So here we have a few examples of E L O and S R. Actions that will enable to supplement and extend services for students. So for example, while winter session is not yet started, planning and planning for this is well in the way. Through the winter learning model, our teachers can provide academic instruction to students in first, third grade from eight to thirty. P M, and our teachers will utilize evidence-based practices in English language arts and mathematics. The rationale for selecting first and third grade. Is that these students miss the most critical years of school. Which is where they learn to read and access information that's once in another year. So winter learning will take place from Jerry Forkland Center at several elementary schools. And we're currently in the process of recruiting teachers, which will then be called the private equipment of students. And to identify our students, the special projects office has used the Star Reading and Math Assessments, which Dr. Hough described. Earlier. And this is obviously recommended by the state. So in identifying students that are below grade level and also students who didn't demonstrate growth would be the priority of the. Another example is at the high schools, for example, we have expanded access. To credit recovery, we added three additional periods. Of credit recovery that are built into the school day in the master schedule. And this supports our students in not only getting back on track towards graduation requirements. That help to support them in that transition to college, so they're being able to meet college requirements as well. And recognizing that the need for social emotional learning to respond to the impact of the pandemic was important. We invested tremendously in social development for all staff. For example, over the summer, our teachers and our classified staff have access to fourteen hours of training and social emotional learning. So they can be prepared to welcome students from their classroom. We also expanded staffing for counseling support at the elementary level. And with an investment in mental health and supports with social movements. The expansion of these services will be discussed later on in this presentation when we see you here. But it's important to note once again that the actions will take time to implement. And for the outcomes to be evident, this aligns with the expectation that money will be spent over three years.
Good evening, I'm going to be going over the next few slides, yeah, thank you for being here, and we're going to be talking about student safety and well-being. On the next few slides, always but especially now as we return from virtual learning. Social emotional and being in our staffing students is a number one priority in this district. And we are very proud, especially as a rolling unified employee. Of all of the staff resources and professional development we put in place to support our staff and students, especially as we hear from other districts. We have many things in place that we're very proud of. The next slide. So in addition to academic data, we'll unify collects data around the social emotional wellbeing of students. During the rollout of our positive behavior intervention and support by S. We started using the S R S S, which is the Student Movement Screening Scale. Use it three times a year for our K twelve students. This data helps our P B I S team that is trying to understand which students might need additional behavioral or emotional support. Every teacher rates their students on how often the student exhibits the risk factors. Aligned in this S R S S, they use a scale of zero to. So that's where you see their percentages, so if zero is never, one is occasionally, two is sometimes, and three is frequent. The fall S R S S. Always scheduled six weeks after the start of school, so the teachers could really get to know their students during that time. And the data here. On this slide is showing the outcomes of the three highest risk factors for cases. Which are nervous and fearful, withdrawn, sad and happy. And the three highest risk factors for seven to twelve. Which is shy and withdrawn, anxious and depressed. The data for each factor shows the percentage of students who are rated a three by their teacher. So if you look, for example, from the left. Teachers reported a three point three percent of the students in grades three through twelve. Were frequently shy and withdrawn. In fall of twenty nineteen, which is the dark. That number almost doubled the next year to six point four. In the light orange, that's fall of twenty twenty. Which was during the middle of the pandemic. As we returned to in-person, that's the new orange. Teachers reported five point one percent of the students as frequently shy and withdrawn. So that's dropping back down. Close to our pre-pandemic, not there yet, but getting closer. You can see that some factors have started to return to pre-pandemic. Shy and withdrawn, sad and happy, this perhaps is due to the reality that students are now around their peers. And this definitely reflects the work that we did to connect also during the pandemic. And our work from our family resource center and really trying to keep our students engaged and our families as well, even when we're in virtual. The pandemic undoubtedly impacted areas foundational to our students' sense of safety and well-being. We heard so many stories. From around the district, so here we have Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And it helps to realize the conditions we fight for learning. These are the needs that need to be met in order to achieve academically. Students need basic needs met before engaging in this higher level thingy. As we listened to students and spoke to families, we heard many stories between students and parents. Students going to work with their families in order to earn money. Yet older siblings. Putting aside their own schoolwork to help their younger siblings to do theirs so that they may be successful. This undoubtedly impacted our academic outcomes. Addressing a whole child is crucial to student success. Rolling Unified took this into consideration as staff and students in terms of in-person learning, that even before. We were in the plan of this a year before they determined. Social emotional learning was permeated and embraced academic and behavioral components within our multi-tier systems of support. Social emotional learning teaches competencies and skills that help students become successful. And social emotional learning also supports me from students with tools that need to enable the academic and behavioral expectations and. According to the collaborative for academic social emotional learning, just asshole. The five key components of social emotional learning are self-awareness, self-management. Relationship skills and responsible decision. And these are the things that our students need to have in place before they can be successful learners. At schools around the district, we're making to our students as learners. And as people, there are many examples of this work we've done throughout the district. Such as welcoming activities, identity days, morning meetings, soft starts. Check-in, check-outs and team lead activities. So we have many supports in place, as I said at the beginning, for social emotional well-being. And I'm going to go over three buckets, there's student support staff. Student resources and services and professional development. So each school in Roland Unified has the Behavior Support Assistant onsite. To support students who may be one-on-one time with an adult. They are used daily to our sites. So far, up until October thirty first, we've had a hundred and one referrals. For our B S As or Behavior Support Assistants, so they are being used very frequently. And are great group support for our teachers as well as our students. Roll Unified. Also, I'm sorry, Roll Unified started five elementary counselors to support our elementary students. I met with them today and it was such a wonderful meeting, it's such a great group of counselors, they just jumped right in there. They're meeting with small groups, modeling for teachers, counseling individual students and getting to know their assigned schools. Our secondary counselors continue to serve our secondary schools as well. We have our six behavioral emotional support teachers, which are best coaches. On special assignments in border schools. They also work with students, model for teachers, and also meet with parents and administrators and our B S As. Our Behavior Support Assistants and guide them in the work as well. Our school psychologists who are knowledgeable about social emotional learning and well-versed in assessment. Continue to serve our students on site. We also are proud to have four in-house social workers, one per each district quadrant. Our student resources and services. Our positive behavior intervention support, our P B I S program offers behavioral strategy structures and supports for all students in this district. P B I S provides behavioral expectations for students, a check-in, check-out program. Modeling and continuous professional development. Most recently, our professional development in P B I S focused around social emotional learning. As well as equity access. We have two wellness centers at this time, one in each of our high schools, no Dallas, Roland. At our wellness centers are offering mental health services, counseling. Resources and a space for the student to tie. These wellness centers hope to be available to some for in the future elementary and municipal sites. Roland Unified also offers in-house referrals for mental health services for students. We have a counseling, there are family resource center for families and individuals. And our own counselors and psychology psychologists also serve our students. We work with outside agencies like civic clinics and our clinical family services. We have our wonderful family resource center, F R C, that offers community connections and counseling. Vision and dental clinic, morning break clubs, which were very popular. When we run virtual learning. We have every child healthy option echo program, which is emergency medical service, as well as serve our homeless and fostered. Our community liaisons continue to do home visits. They offer translation services, help support basic needs and truly serves that bridge between home and school for our district. We continue to offer professional development. This summer, we offered fourteen hours professional development for certification as well as classified staff. We provide a workshop like social emotional training, how to support students with anxiety and. We continue to provide this professional development, it is still available. And our best coaches also offer monthly workshops, especially in areas of social emotional learning and P B I S strategies. In July, we had a large group of administrators, coaches and program specialists. Attend M T S S multi-tier system support conference. We met during follow-up meetings to debrief next year as well. So just to give you an example of one child and what his or her story may look like. And with these wraparound services, so for example, we have one student. Who was struggling in class for whatever reason, especially coming back from pandemic. And might be acting out. Throwing things or not engaged, we would start with our Behavior Support Assistant, which is at every site. The Behavior Support Assistant would lead that student. Tried to give them techniques and strategies. Also consult with a counselor, because now there's an elementary counselor, all the secondary. The counselor can come in and also offer services, speak with the parents, model for the teacher. We have our best coaches. Who could also be providing professional development. For that teacher or teachers at the grade level, as well as meet with parents. And model for the Behavior Support Assistant on what to do with the student. Available on site is also our psychologists and social workers of they are, they are needed. It might be a mental health issue, so we have referrals to the family resource center. We also have our wellness centers at the high schools that we use, as well as our community insights. It might be that the child, and these are things to look for. The child might not be eating, the child might not have the resources, he or she is maybe embarrassed. So they would then refer to the family resource center. Every school site has our family resource center referrals. And know how to use them to get ahold of their liaisons. So then we would refer for counseling, basic needs, backpack, food. And continue to go down through all the mental health supports and see where we need to go with this student. So as you see, these are true wraparound services that we have for all of our students. T K twelve.
Good afternoon, in addition to the supportive resources that all students receive. Our district provides additional resources targeted at supporting our special populations and subgroups. Our special education department, for example, has continued to support implementation of unique learning systems. Which is a web-based supplemental curriculum that provides students with access to personalized learning based on their I E P role. Our special education department is also planning professional development around the workshop model for our special education teachers. All teachers receive professional development around their focus areas at their school sites. However, this is additional professional learning focused on providing those targeted skills and strategies that will help. Support the different instructional needs in a multi-grade classroom. Our E L D also continues, our, our district also continues to provide professional development around integrated and designated English language development. This learning supports our teachers as they meet the linguistic needs of our English learner population. We provide those monthly training and coaching sessions with secondary E L D teachers. Project AMP teachers, instructional aides and tutors. As well as opportunities for asynchronous professional learning where teachers can access topics based on their interests and needs at their own pace and time. Our, our English learner program specialist, our program specialist continues to provide those monthly updates containing. Strategies, tech tips and pedagogy practices that support learning around English learner proficiency levels. These monthly updates also, also include videos with demos, explanations and links to more resources. New this year for our English learner population is Abbott Excel, which is offered at both intermediate schools. This program focuses on accelerating language acquisition skills to prepare our English learner, language learners for college. In addition to Abbott Excel, we also continue with College Connect Program. Which is targeted to support our first generation foster and homeless students. Some of the supports available include how to access and apply to colleges, support students with college essays. They off, we offer financial aid informational nights for students and their families, as well as support. Students with their financial aid application and college application. So as we move on to additional emotional supports targeted at addressing the needs of our targeted subgroups and special populations. New this year, and in addition to the wellness centers, our special education department received a grant. And are in the process of establishing turnaround rooms to help students self-regulate and de-escalate during situations of elevated anxiety and frustration. These rooms will include resources such, such as sensory, to support with sensory activities like beanbags. Weighted blankets or painting and support of de-escalate. Behaviors. The great thing about these rules is that it will be offered, it will be targeted for special education students, but these rooms will be offered to anyone that needs, that needs the support. In addition to the turnaround rooms, our students continue to receive support from our behavior emotional support teachers. Who work closely with both the teacher and the student side by side inside the classroom. To provide strategies and ideas on how to best support that student. We also continue to provide our mental health support, and as Mrs. Ramirez mentioned previously. We have acquired licensed clinical social workers and additional counselors at elementary schools. And we continue to partner with outside agencies like Footail and Civic Clinics. To help support students and their families with more intensive support if needed. Lastly, and through the tremendous work of the Family Resource Center, we continue to provide essential resources and services for our targeted students and their families. One such example is our continued partnership with the SUSH Foundation, which helps provide fresh produce for our students and their families.
Thank you. So with regards to our next steps, uh we will continue to implement quality instruction, the pedagogy that we focused on pre-pandemic, we know works. We saw the impact that it had on our students' academic achievement. We will also continue to provide those wraparound services and that emphasis on social mo- mo- need. As you can see, our presentation really has a low balance approach to both academics and um social emotional need. And we will continue to implement, develop and implement the actions identified in our three plans, our local support and ability plan, our yellow plan and our tester plan to make sure that we are focusing on not only our students, but also the support that our staff needs to ensure that uh they also feel successful and they also feel well equipped to address a new student. Uh we want to thank them because our teachers are the ones that are the champions. We want to thank our site administrators because they're the ones that are first in line when their teachers and the students we uh support. And so we know that this is a collaborative effort and we're um moving forward in this way to make sure that not only the needs of students, but the needs of our community, the needs of our teachers and the needs of our administrators are being met. And so we look forward to continuing to update the board. We have the major report coming up where we put all of our actions together and provide that support. We also look forward to the process as we go through with the outcome where we seek the uh input of our stakeholders as we continue forward. What I definitely want to remind the board again that um student dismissal during student dismissal on virtual learning, we've had uh tremendous success with getting students to participate. However, the best place for a student to be is in front of a teacher. There is nothing that can keep the place of that. And so being in front of our teachers now, our students are more able to engage in not only collaboration, dialogue, and interacting with the teacher. Um day to day is what's going to make sure that we go back to where we were and fire. So thank you. Mr. Chen, I will say, um, if any questions?
Any. Yeah, I have stuff. It's like one page. Whether the patient. Are the students for anxious or nervous?
Oh, that was part of that with nurses presentation?
Right.
Like it's on the slide, it's on the screen right now.
I hear it, I hear it. You know, I'm running back from when I was working in psychiatric uh facilities with children. And we have what was called the snoosland room, which is sounds snoosland. It sounds like it came from. Sounds like it's something similar to your turnaround room. We had um black lights in there, we had running waters, uh we had beanbag chairs. And whenever adolescent was in out of control, they were allowed to go into the snoosland room. And they discount that, it was remarkable. And I I'm so glad to see you have something similar to everything that's been done. Because they really do work and probably create them to be uh common. And when I see nervous as being seven point four. And uh some of these other ones are sad or unhappy or depressed or anxious are still higher. Post-pandemic, pre-pandemic. I think all those dudes who attended the turnaround room are similar to this new one in concept. I don't know if I could have. You know, that one um test that you had in person, the star reading and the star map. You said those are both in-person exams or in-person administration? I'm just wondering.
One was remote and one was.
Uh one was remote?
Yeah, correct. The dark orange is remote.
Okay, yeah. And the other one was in person?
Correct.
Yeah. Um I'm just wondering, the ones that were in-person administration in twenty twenty one, if that's a skewed population, that parents that want their kids to go to school are more aggressive, must make sure that kids do better. And as a result, um those students are higher functioning than those that are staying home. I don't know. I'm just thinking that that could be a skewed population. Skewed population is to students that go to school versus ones that stay at home, whatever reason. And then the parents are more aggressive. Uh we thought they'd do better.
We do have independent study that is often not, if culture education, all students are engaged or supposed to be engaged in school. Uh so with the light orange bar, that assessment is from students that were in personal learning in August and September. The independent study assessments are not included in the light orange bar.
Not this, it will be in June.
Right. So it in that time, in the August, September timeframe, there were over, well, just over five hundred students that were in independent study. That number has grown a little bit since then. But so when you look at our total district population, um it's less than about five hundred students in that data set because they were in independent study. Not, I'm not sure, I don't, we'll never be able to get the answer to that question, I'm sure. But I would say, because the whether a student is in in-person learning or in in-person study, I'm not sure that was a the choice in terms of the eagerness of of the learning. It was the the issue around the the state of the beast uh because of the virus. So the the light orange also be asked. We need such an in-person. However, it's also under eighteen months of virtualment.
Right.
So um you know, that's something to really consider. So as Dr. Puff said, the administration in May, in January, will give us five months of being in another district, which we know is the best place.
If light orange, one, nine, three months, August, September?
No, it's three weeks.
Three weeks.
Yeah.
So very short. And you just learn the tests just from the first day of this year. What day was the end of September?
No, it wasn't happy in September. It was a couple of weeks, the end of August.
End of August, for just three weeks.
That uh one thing about this assessment is that our teachers can use it as a guide enough to see where the student strengths and areas. So assessments are multiple purposes, not just like it's nowhere exactly, how exactly Dr. Zmora had been on that day. But also my strengths and my areas need. So then our teachers can uh go about differentiating the instruction that Maddie gets versus the instruction that Dr. Puff needs. And so that's um a good thing about this assessment early on. To really see the areas of strength and areas need for.
Yeah, on page six and seven. Before, um somebody, they were trying to mention how critical it was in grade, you know, one, two, three, as far as forming a base for the students' futures success. And that kind of concerns me because uh grades three through six, both on the English and math. They're they're fairly low. And if that's going to, if we don't make it up fast, it's going to affect them in future years. So how do we keep that population from continuing to fall behind because of the base that we see?
So I think that many of the things that were needed, um not only are areas focused that we were um really uh committed to pre-pandemic, but these are continuing. But also the professional development, still acknowledge, addressing these social needs of students and the interventions as well as tutoring. Those are ways to mitigate some of that loss. Now, are we going to even mitigate that in one year? I'd be unlikely.
Right.
Uh because the situation is still not pre-pandemic. We're not pre-pandemic yet, so what it needs. And we still have some limitations. Um so we know that it's going to take a little bit of time, get back to pre-pandemic and forward. The great thing about students is that for the most part, students stay quite in the school district. And they continue to be with us throughout pre- period. And also the students that move around districts, they may move to another school, they stay within district. And so we feel that that will give us um the ability to support them as we as we're not only monitoring their current state, but also monitoring how they're achieving.
And there's been a lot of articles written, uh in city of students, so African-American students have been hurt more than other groups as far as a pandemic is concerned. Uh I don't see that being addressed at all here, in the city of students.
We we focus on one of the areas of focus, the subjects. It's how we focus on students. Um but ethnicity is not, it's not something that we. So we do have, we do have sub-group data on, at least we did not present it in this presentation, but we do look at that. We look at the, when we talked about the achievement gaps. We're looking at the achievement gap of within subgroups, but we also look at the achievement gap within ethnicities. And we have presented that in mid-year reports in the past. We've been able to look at our different populations and we can provide that information for those interested in that.
Thank you. Excellent presentation.
I want to start off by saying I really appreciate how you. Here's this people's point of like, for the pandemic, moving forward, yeah, that's a really like approach. Um and and you did a great job uh with all of it, so. Uh if we can look at slide four. Um and and Dr. H, you did a great job on my data, you did a great job with my, about how we pulled up the lower, the lower point of data points. That's exactly what I see here, but it's a fantasy, when it's the higher and when it's higher, it is pulling up that bottom line. Um I know, um yeah, help me that where there is some other areas of performance and they're not making on this slide. Why did I?
Sure, yeah, so um the this presentation typically is around academic achievement. Uh and so we focus on the English language arts and the mathematics outcomes. Um you're absolutely right, there are other, there are six or seven other tiles that represents student engagement and public readiness. And that is typically what will be presented in the mid-year report that we're preparing right now for you. Uh provide the longitudinal data, the same outcomes. Those are the things that I think here. Yeah, this is what you compare the, a lot of, a lot of. I just wanted to point that out. Uh and and I looked and it wasn't like shaking anything, I looked at all the data, it was, it 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 was fine, it was very similar, so it's not. Uh wasn't like everything was kind of higher. From the general public. Um and then along the same lines, you have three years of data here. Um why do we only play limited three years of data? So um chose three years, just to keep in mind, so we have three years of the dashboard as a tree. And then um the new accountability model is also going to get three years, this is a baseline here, three years, so we just use that same timeframe. Um if we can afford it, we can provide additionally here, they have.
No, I was not getting on the dashboard, and it only allowed for the three years of data, so it wasn't like we were hiding anything. Wasn't like we did, maybe five years ago, we dropped out and we showed up. Well, thank you on that. Um. And then, and this is being presented as we do the district as a whole, and you guys are looking at individual schools and breaking down from that point and don't. Okay, thank you.
And just to respond to that, we do have, I mean, we present a short presentation, but our ed services team this averages the data by school, by subgroup within the school, by grade level within the school. And then they meet with the school team and have conversations around that data with the school. And then the school principal as the instructional leader has data talks and data conversations with their school staff as well. They're able to see areas of strength and areas of growth. We also look for areas of of success that can be replicated in other places. So we're seeing things um that are happening in one particular school building. Um and we, so we look to see what, we see a really high spike or or went up or down. Where did that come from? What happened? Can we replicate that or make sure we don't replicate that if it's going in the wrong direction? And so the ed services team um does that analysis. Um there's Janet Chong, works out of Brian's office, also goes out and meets with school staff. And then there's an assessment we need also to school, um that Janet and Brian work with that um shows the school staff how to look at their own data. And do as Dr. Zmora said, he can look at their, look at their data and be able to make adjustments um so that they can make corrections and or reinforce areas even though they're looking at this. Yeah, that's. Happens on the micro level, not on the macro level.
Right, and we got the board, we probably don't want to see it on the micro level, I haven't. A brief, very low.
We'll be here until next Tuesday.
We can look at slide thirteen. Um and then you talk about winter learning, and I think that's a great example, probably will address with this development order you have brought up, just bringing it in with learning and that type of thing. Um and and then somewhere in here, you're talking with uh like a thing. Uh your your tutoring, your expanded tutoring, I just want to make sure we are focused on 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 math. And it sounded, I heard you were getting, you were getting a lot of requests for math. On slide nine, you were talking about that was a big concern, just making sure that we are focused, uh bringing that to addressing the math side.
Yes, um tutoring and math is definitely um. Part of the focus and difficulty for me. And why I mentioned the situation is that I mean, there is so a lot of it's done. In person, so that's how we make progress. Not only the students on the map, but also within the online. Then there are called tutors that. So it's definitely, and they are able, our students are seeing that problem, it's definitely one of our components in the extended.
Perfect, perfect, thank you. Lastly, on slide fifteen. I like them. Behaviors and support is, we've been a lot of you, that's great. You're really doing one thing. Um and and a similar question, that second bucket, um is are these resources being used by? And we have free resources to use, just want to make sure we're not, you know, really saying, in the worst of all of it. Right, well, especially in the high school, secondary is sometimes there's um not an encouragement to go to see this, so I just want to make sure of the ready.
Sure, and then um as I talked about the first bucket, we actually have, you know, data showing the numbers and times for the essays are being referred. Our counselors are, they just started, they're already sharing the, I'm modeling for fifteen teachers this week. I've met with fifty-two students between the three schools, so they're already collecting that data, so they are well-used. And then when we talk about second bucket, um the same, I mean, with our PBIS teams, we meet by weekly. So they're constantly saying how many times in with principals and teachers. And um they're continuing to collect that data. And the family resource center is always busy, our community liaison, um especially during when we were on, when we were on the pandemic, we were virtual learning. They were still doing home visits, but from their car, they couldn't go in. So there are continuously needs, and now more than ever, we have a family because of their basic needs, translations. I'm trying to engage, um so they are being well-used, absolutely.
And you said they're being home visits from the.
Yes, that's what happened during the pandemic, even when they couldn't, they were still calm at home.
Yeah.
Very close proximity to the house.
And you feel like you're getting supported, you're right there for being safe, but you know, you get somebody there.
It was amazing, it was amazing, so we're getting a lot of support to our teachers.
I think we do appreciate your forward-looking across everything here, which was quite emotional. And that is underlying, and I was like, your day was going to be. And that is underlying, and I was like, your day was going to really be such that, that is, that is where we need to focus, and and then. But thank you, Brian.
You know, I was saying, why didn't you mention? And it's one per district quad? That's something, is that something new? Because I didn't tell you the district broke up with.
We do now. Now that we have four social workers. Yeah.
We just did a listing of what's.
We can.
And this?
Uh, yes, first of all, excellent work. You are a good team. Team player, I salute you. For jungle. Uh, my question is regarding page twelve. When you said training for school staff, you're talking about certificated and classified. Which classified staff do you have for these training? Is it? Instructional assistants or, and what kind of training do you give them?
So, Mr. Bexer, do you want to add to that? I'm gonna turn it over, because who's done the classified?
So, great question. So, there's a number of different things that occur for classified training. So, the special education department, a couple of years ago, began training your staff, actually several years ago, in CPI, which is restraint mechanism. And they've, they've involved all the special education, I think, instructional assistance teams who need to have them. That's ongoing certification program, requires a couple of days. It teaches behaviors, teaches your strengths, and those employees may engage in that in their daily work. Which is, doesn't happen very often, but in case it does, they're trained and certified. Additionally, the, through special education department, there's been an ongoing training that's been provided, starting about a year and a half ago. Through some online mechanisms. I forget the name of the, the course title, there's, there's over a hundred course titles that are available for professional development. We utilized those last year when we were fully about for our professional development day, and that went pretty well. And I'd be, I'd be completely remiss if I didn't bring up the ongoing professional development that we do on our two non-student days as part of our contract. And so on those two non-student days, we engage with classified employees in a conference-style approach, and we've been doing that for the last seven years. And we have, this year, we focused the training to align with that training through educational services and certificate ways on social emotional learning. Last week, and I included in some information for the Friday memo, the course titles and things that were being offered for classified employees from Grand Canyon University. They've been a great partner with us in the program, and they, they've offered training for us in person last week. Wait, last week? Last week, right? I guess time's flying. Remember first, and as well, a month ago, October first, they did. We also engage in training for classified employees on an as-needed basis. We've offered training for our bus drivers on a continuous basis, because that's part of their driver training. Roseanna McLeod has helped us with certification on portlets and safety. Kenan and Associates has been involved with us in a number of different safety trainings for all of our buildings and grounds. Our director of maintenance and operations and previous, previous to him. Our custodial supervisor had engaged in training through our janitorial supply companies to make sure the custodians had the appropriate training to deal with mixing chemicals and best practices and things like that. Mr. Flores, when he brought in the Corax three sixty machines, we had the custodians fully trained on that multiple times. And so there's, there's a whole variety of trainings that are available for classified staff based on their positions in the district and what they need to know to be, to to perform at high levels, as well as to make sure they are safe. Nutrition services, ongoing training consistently for food safety, food handling, and and a number of other things. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, what about technology part?
Oh, absolutely, so, technology department has engaged with their staff. You know, we're looking at Promethean Board here, and so some of the staff are engaged with becoming certified and installing those. They're engaged in, in making sure that they know how to operate and set them up, I'm thinking of the, I can't think of the word they use. But basically, pushing out the, the data for them, maintaining them. I'm saying that again? Updating them, that was where I was working, thank you. I got, I got, I got talking to my ear, which is a team here. Additionally, they, they have provided their staff with opportunities to go to outside training in the past. There's been a little bit less of that because of, you know, COVID. But the ongoing professional development has been something for all employees that Dr. Mitchell has really wanted us to focus on. And I think that we've done a good job of it.
I think you too, the answer to, specifically to this particular slide with yellow and with the ed system plan. You had asked, is it just instructional aids? And so there is an instructional focus to it. But because we have such a strong social and emotional learning piece, it's any employee who has contact with students and those that potentially have the opportunity to work with students. So our grounds, our maintenance, our custodians, our district office staff, et cetera, all have the opportunity, as I already mentioned, with additional hours of social emotional learning. And how they can support students, they were all given the opportunity to partner and work with teachers and or other classified staff to do activities on school campuses, et cetera, as a part of those additional fourteen hours of compensation in the learning and the training. So, so it is not just instructional aids, as Mr. Bixler's pointed out, it's cross support.
I'm the security officer, could be the most important person.
The bus driver, the custodia, the office assistant, the health worker.
Yeah, correct, that's, that's good to know, and and very, very acceptable and very. Thank you, and thank you for that, for that work that you did for the classified staff. On page thirteen, additional staff for integrated student supports. What exactly are additional staff are you talking about?
So when, in relation to this particular slide, that is in reference to, and I'm looking to implement and help support staff, for example, the social workers and the additional counselors. And the behavior support assistance, so we're talking about the, the idea or in terms of the way it's spelled out with the grant, and that's what it's about, integrating those social emotional supports for students so they can access. So we're looking at additional staff, integrate those, we're looking at some of the examples like the counselor, the social workers. To be able to access learning.
Okay, added positions to the district staff.
Yes, I think this is where I shared a few additional positions that were added. I don't remember the exact number of counselors, I hope you hit the right number.
Five elements.
And we have four social workers and five additional. And BSA, people specialists at every school, and the best team, that is, I think, six, six special, specialized teachers in media. So as you can see, we have a lot of background for instead, and tend to any student in the.
Well, I'm really impressed, thank you so much.
Yeah, we are. It's just a part of the board, and improving all of the programs and staff, they really be able to move the students in a timely manner.
Thank you for your excellent report. On page four. I'm a little confused because I'm looking at the, let's look at two thousand seventeen, where it says twenty-five points, two points below standard. And then two thousand nineteen also says twenty-five points, two points below standard. But we were in orange, and then we went to yellow, is that because we went up from the year before, even though they're the same amount?
That's right, you're actually right, so this, this is a year-over-year growth model, so the color is determined by just last year.
So we stayed in orange even though we, did we go down, like, okay, it goes from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, twenty-five point two points below, and then twenty-nine point three points below. But it maintained, didn't we go down?
So we went down, right, so, so twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, technically, in terms of the number. It went down, but that, there's a couple of points that, that have different performance levels in that. Right, so that was, that was qualified as a maintaining.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It didn't go down as much to be, to, to.
Okay. All right, on page five, developer board members, a star map and star reading test is very easy, and the student goes to the computer and actually does a reading test. Get a, gets a reading thing and then answers the question, and keeps going until they miss too many, then they know their level on math is really easy. So my question, if some of this was in person, right? Or was this all, like, when it says math participation only eight, star map eighty-one, and star reading eighty-two?
So all of this, in, in twenty twenty-one, all of that was done.
So there's no way to get it, like, close to, we had ninety-seven or close to a hundred? We just have to go to the parents to be having the kids do it, like, why is it not higher than eighty-one?
Yeah, so, good question, so it's not higher, so that was in the, the end of our remote instruction here. And teachers and site administrators, we all were very hard to get as many, that's, I mean, multiple, multiple times extending the window, it's going to be window. And it just calling them, yeah, and classified staff, they come, I'll make calls. And so that eighty-one percent, seventy percent reflects a tremendous amount of work that sites did. Fully remote, we don't, obviously, and we won't be in remote attention this year, so our rate will be much better.
We're looking forward to it.
Plus, that's a smaller group operation. There's some, I don't know, so we like that, like, two thousand students.
Still a percentage of the number of students.
Right, sending the number of students.
It's still the percentage of the number of students, so, yeah, and and it, yes. I mean, we had fewer enrolled students in twenty twenty-one, but it's still a percentage of the number of students enrolled. Usually it's in the high nineties or in person, correct? Yes, yes, okay, and again, I think as, as Dr. H said. We were in the sixties and started, and we called, we had people come in, we called. We, we need to have the daughter take this test, this is what it means, this is why it's important, we need to see where they are. Well, this is April and May of twenty twenty-one, and people were like, no, we're like, done. And.
Still, they get it up over twenty percent by the hard effort from everybody.
So it, that, that move, and so we've. Although it's not impressive, when you look at eighty-two percent or seventy-four percent compared to ninety-five or ninety-seven percent, it was a perfect effort to get there, so. And it, it gave us at least a solid baseline that we can compare May to August.
Thank you for explaining, and lastly, page nine. Did we do anything differently, foster youth, because how nice that it went up in such a short amount of time, do you give extra interventions or something to have that number go up?
One, have you thought of foster youth, because it's a very small.
Okay. Each other, okay.
I think it's important to realize too, as much as we'd like to take full credit for that rise, those are different. So foster youth, as Brian has said, there's such a small number of students, and they, there's, there's continuous movement in those populations. I know the board has asked questions, and has really wanted us to concentrate on foster youth. And and that is something that, that the ed services team is working on to share with the board. That the number of foster youth that we look at in, out of twenty twenty-one is a different group of students. So, within our homeless population, our specialized population, our youth population, there you see a significant number of common students. So, you know, there's ninety percent of those students remain the same. On foster youth, it's about ten percent of the students remain the same. So, it's very difficult to compare year-over-year with foster youth. And that's where you all have asked the question, why do we keep seeing this, and what are we doing with the students, but it's not the same students.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, and that's just what, you and your team. Excellent presentation, excellent job. During the switching from in-person to virtual, and switching from virtual back to personal. Be valid, I think, and. Keep the kids. And questions in the. I have a lot of questions you answered. Answered. For the, trying to understand and, and the, 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 the data. Then all these. Tables, grade three, six, seven, eight, what is eleven, those are. The, the group of, yeah, third grade, the sixth grade, or seventh, eighth grade, yeah, for example. Page five. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, so these are twenty twenty-one. Third and sixth, so those are the kids. The, the, the year of twenty twenty-one, or third and sixth, so those kids are, are twenty nineteen, you are first and second. So these are. I, I like to compare the.
I see what you're asking.
Yeah, so this is not looking at the same group of students for those two years, it's the third or sixth graders of twenty nineteen compared to the third or sixth grader. So. So they're, they're different groups of things.
It's a grade span of students. It's not students.
Right, or, or example, the, the kids from twenty nineteen, they are, they're third grade. And they have, they have fifth grade on twenty twenty-one, so, so they are taking the test in twenty nineteen, or it's all in person. And twenty twenty-one. And. And then the, the C L O. And we give fun, these are, these are funding from, from government, from federal. So, how do we justify, we need to report us, or, or have how we justify we use this plan properly, we need to. Is this, is this part of the, part of the requirement for us to justify how we stand? So there is a burning, um, the plan that you approved was our initial plan. Check with Dr. Mitchell. But believe it's twenty twenty-four, this is, is an actual.
So yes, there is an accountability, if audit is there, accountability. There are certain ways in which we can spend the money, the dollars, and so we have, the plan has to be approved, which has been approved. And but there are, there is the ability for us to make changes about that plan to make sure it needs to use our students at that moment. And the dollars need to be spent over a three-year period.
So twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
You know, page fifteen. How, how do we collect this data? Or, for example, shy and drawing pictures, as, how, how do we, how do we?
So this is teacher generated, so it's like a teacher observation. And they do it after six weeks of school, so they get, they spend time getting to know the students first, and they use a zero-to-three scale. So the teachers spend a lot of time doing this, getting to know their students, and already thinking about those, and monitoring and watching. So by the time they take this S R S S.
So by the time they take this S R S S.
Every classroom teacher has that, uh, responsibility.
Yes, it's all part of our P B I S. Yes.
Is, is there a root word that says?
Yeah, yes.
So there is one.
Yes, yeah, we remember the zero three. And everybody does a great job, continuing, interpreted in, um, now, which is something that they know what they do, and it's very useful for them, too, it's a great tool.
After the, um, teacher have the report, and what was next step, we, what did they send, put it by the parents, um? Just do the procedure.
Now, so, it's used, there may be individuals supporting conversations, if you feel that, um. There may be a problem.
In, in some cases, maybe very serious, maybe it's a group of suicide.
And that would be ongoing, the teacher probably wouldn't wait for an assessment like this, they're trained for assessment, and what to do in these cases, uh, so they wouldn't wait, but this, this definitely could relax something, you know, that they haven't seen.
The professional development, um. Then to support, we support the, um, twenty-one. E L D, and can you provide a little detail on, how, how, how this is.
All right, E L D, I'm gonna have, uh, some students, sure, we're gonna have. Of that, so, we provide professional development and a wide view of ways, we have really been focused on reaching our teachers and our instructional aid aids in terms of, and personal professional development, not being available for us anymore, so we if we sue after school and for our instructional fees, we pay monthly, professional development on YELL topics, so, uh, working with small groups, doing differentiation and expression, also looking at our E L A and MAS standards, integrated with our E L A standards for teachers. We continue to meet with certain groups that we've always met, so, for instance, some of our focus areas are, of course, our YOZ teachers at the secondary level, but we also have a need to teachers, each of that we move with, that we work on, YELL support, integrated with technology. We also do, um, pretty much monthly, monthly, we send out different professional developments that the teachers will get and respond and focus area meetings, where we discuss strategies, there's also coaching going on for young people, possibly model lessons, hopefully, working with the teacher on the car. Also having the teacher, if they're interested, be notified when our program changes, but it's a constant communication, because we always need for newcomers to differentiate, because we have a lot of, of course, newcomers at the secondary level, which is ultimately, it's like a little bit more difficult for them to gain access, so we really have pretty much professional development for the different different types of students, newcomers, our regular students that are progress, our long-term English learners.
So, most of these are done virtually?
And right now, we're doing virtual, but we do, look forward to doing in-person. Right now, we have been doing it, uh, in virtually, but also, things that they could do on their phone, like the synchronous instruction, we can follow why, they can use videos that our program specials have to follow, answer questions, come back, and.
But this, you, this work done, doing every hour of our.
It's been done after school right now, because there's, we, we, in the, in the past, we did have after school, and we also had during school day for substitute. And substitute, also, we also, this recently, we have our own teachers, doing some professional development, so the teachers that intend a professional development, if they wish, they practice a lesson, that was actually done for them online, and then we videotape them, videotape them and share it with others. So we just did this, this, you, kind of think I think that was.
Thank you. Well, this is, thank you very much, yeah. Yeah, Eric, this is on my note, I'm on page, uh, five. I want to thank you, I'm very, as fantastic, with your luck, and having that forethought and insight, thinking about them going into college, where they, it's like, that's, you didn't take Easy Road out, you put a Fit First. And that was, I apologize for missing out, except for putting that point, that, that's a great, that was something that I do appreciate, thinking about how they can place college, the, so.
Yes, Dr. Pop's chair, we really need to teach teachers in their conversation, um, with regards to the assessment, kind of the, 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 the. And so, teaching would be very valuable to.
Eric?
Uh, on page twelve, it says note funding to be spent over three years, what fiscal year are we?
Through twenty twenty-four, it'll be sent by December of twenty twenty-four.
December?
Right, and Alex, or Esther, and Yella.
They both, both funding?
Yes.
And purchase? Thank you very much for your, yeah, for the presentation.
In the motion, and a second to join the study session of the new past good difficult education, look, oh, well. I need.
My second.
And just a second, Luca Wood, Dan Freeman.
Hi.
Enes Gonzalez.
Hi.
David Malcolm.
Hi.
Eric Manegas.
Hi.
Terry Chen.
Hi.
Which is Terry. You need to join, six, four, eight, thank you, and, you mean?